Morning, everyone. It's nine o'clock. I will call this meeting to order. I'll make a note that the live streaming, we've had some technical difficulties with our provider. And it is streaming, but there may be some glitches or dead airtime in the stream if you hear about that following the meeting. I would call on the clerk to call the roll, please.
Thank you, Warden. Counselor Arnold.
I am very much present.
Counselor Boushee. Counselor Bradley. Counselor Broad. Counselor Brusowicz.
President.
Counselor Case.
Present.
Counselor Cook.
Present.
Counselor Gilliland.
President.
Counselor Gillis.
President.
Counselor Hand.
President.
Counselor McDougal.
Here.
Counselor Marriott.
Present.
Deputy Warden McCharles.
President.
Counselor McGugan.
Present.
Counselor Napper.
Present.
Counselor Veen.
Here.
Warden Weaver.
Present.
The roll has been called, and you have a quorum.
Thank you. I would ask that we stand for a moment of silent reflection. I would ask if anyone has a pecuniary interest to declare it seeing none. We have item five, information reports. Item A, information report, March 2nd, regarding attrition management update. We could have a motion to receive for information and then some discussion. Counselor Marriott, seconded by Counselor Case. Any questions or comments regarding that report? Mayor Arnold. Counselor Arnold.
Thank you, Warden Weaver. I just, I know that this was quite a bone of contention a few years ago, and I really appreciate the work that our CIO and all the members of staff have done to really take a hard look at the people requirement of this county. And, you know, there's a lot of folks here that have been impacted, and not only the ones that end up going out and doing whatever they do now, but also our, the folks that are left here to do the work. And I'm just wondering, if I may, Mr. Warden, just have a comment from our CIO in regards to the level of service and the impact on the remaining employees that are involved in some of these departments, that they are directly affected.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. The, as you see from here, a large number of them. Backtrack for a second. Some of the, the people that are, the positions that are being affected through the attrition plan tend to be two types. One is positions dependent on government funding, and the other is a reallocation of existing resources. We've moved people, for example, I think, in the homes where we needed to put people on frontline or into a management-type position as opposed to what they'd been doing. So, we're trying to make do with what we've got. And the reassignments of people can create pressure points in the organization. They're a little different than the positions that are simply, there's no funding for them anymore, and we end up winding, winding up the work and moving on. Some of those positions are blended positions, too, so I'm not trying to downplay the effect on the remaining employees because there is some impacts on them, but they tend to be a cleaner, if I can call it that, kind of change in the staffing complement than the others. So, there are impacts. We're at, in the mid-70 range. We've got another, I think, two employee positions that will be reflected in the next year already in terms of readjustments. And there'll come a point where we're kind of right-sized, if I can call it that. We've had a fairly high degree of success in terms of the numbers. If you're just a number counter, there's been a large number of positions affected, but there won't come a point where we're going to level off, I would think, and we're probably nearing that, but I don't know if that answers your question.
Yes, it does. Thank you very much. Just, I guess I, the effort that staff has done, and as well as those rest of the employees that are left in the positions that have been directly impacted, that, you know, stepping up and picking up what's left, and I just want to express my appreciation to everyone for trying to make things more cost-effective. So, for Arnold, anyone else?
I just want to echo Mayor Arnold's comments. This, since this was brought forward, I think about four years ago, it has been a really good report to receive on a quarterly basis, and taking steps to downsize the workforce in a humane, proper manner instead of slashing and burning. I just want to add to those comments. Really pleased to see that you're now providing to us the net benefit on the levy, because the past, the past was just a general number, so you couldn't make that, you couldn't understand what exactly did it mean. And I understand in number positions, it's 100% provincial money or whatever, but having that impact is very helpful to us. So, again, I think it's a job well done. Thank you.
Anyone else have motioned to receive this for information? All in favor of that? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. Item B is an information report regarding the county's asset management plan and budget process, another information report. We could have a motion to receive for information. We can have some discussions. Counselor McDougal, seconded by Counselor Cook. Any questions on this report? Counselor Arnold.
Well, thank you, Warden Weaver. I guess, contrary to the report that we received just a minute ago, I felt pretty good reading that and seeing all the work that was done, and then I had to have another cup of coffee and put my feet up a little bit higher when I read John's report, and going through what we need in our asset management plan. And when you start looking at the numbers that have been identified there, I was very depressed, and I'm trying to figure out how the flip can we keep the county working and make it work when we're that far behind in infrastructure right out of the gate? I drive around quite a bit, as you all know, and I don't think the county looks quite that bad. So, are we realistic in where we're looking at these numbers as far as what the shortfall is, or is it something that council at some point, and it probably won't be in my lifetime, but will have to make some real hard decisions on what we're going to be involved in, whether we start closing roads, or abandoning bridges, or going someplace south, or putting up tents out in the, our seniors' facilities, or something like that? Because when you start looking at those types of dollars, it's very scary. When somebody's telling me in 2017, I got $190 million shortfall in infrastructure allocation, and I need to pound up my dollars and cents in order to keep our infrastructure viable, I really struggle with that. So, I guess my question through yourself, Mr. Warden, is whether or not that we need to really take a look once again at the validity of the numbers based on a different model, whether it's stretching out the asset, or whatever, or are we doomed to fail eventually?
I asked for Mr. Ennis to comment on this, please.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. In the report, we comment on the fact that there are still a number of aspects with regards to this report, or to the asset management plan, the actual software that we're working on. One of those is what we refer to as being condition indexes. And the idea behind a condition index is that instead of simply looking at the asset and saying, "It has reached the end of its useful life and therefore should be replaced," that we should be taking a look as we go along as to whether or not conditions have changed, whether that particular asset is proving to be a longer life than, than the average, and then adjust those numbers accordingly. We do not have the mechanism to do that right now, and we've identified the fact and ourselves, Mr. Cole and his staff, and a number of people are all looking at, how do we get this type of information built into the plan? Because we recognize that right now it's an extremely blunt tool, and the reason that we are not using it, you know, as the arbitrator of decisions that we make for the budget is because we know that the, you know, there's lots of nuances that we haven't been able to get in yet. The other thing we have to do, you commented on stretching the life of the assets, we want to take a look at what the actual useful life of the assets are. Because, again, when we set up the table, it's based on our amortization policy that we have in place. That was based on the best information we had at that time, but if we continue to have, for example, winters like we're having now, perhaps a road instead of lasting 18 years might last 20 years because we're not going to have as much frost heaving. We don't know yet. We're trying to get that information into that. So, in general, we recognize the fact that the report is not to the point that we can look at that and say, "This is the definitive number." Right now, it is indicative of the fact that we're not spending as much as we need to spend, but I'm not prepared to say that that's the absolute, you know, firm number that we have to spend or that we are short. If, with regards to your comments about the relative state of roads or the assets of this county, yes, we are further ahead than many others. And I think that is because of the foresight that this council has had in the past to invest in infrastructure and keep it to the state that it is. So, we are better than others. The problems we're facing, quite frankly, are the same as every other municipality is facing out there. And one of the reasons that we haven't been able to bring in condition indexing and these other things is because everybody's trying to figure out exactly what the appropriate numbers are. And the report indicated that we're going to continue to look into this, we're going to continue to fine-tune and develop the program, we will continue to report what the asset management plan says, and at some point in time, when we are confident that it's giving us numbers that are as definitive as we can be, then we'll be prepared to use that as being more of an arbitrator of what we need to do going forward.
Call up Counselor Arnold.
Yeah, thanks, John. As always, you make me, I'll be able to sleep a little better tonight. But I still, when I start looking at these numbers, it just blows me away that we would be that far away from where we need to be, and you're absolutely right. And it's gone back a lot of years that we tried to make sure that our capital program was good, staff has done a great job with bringing forward things that, that need to be replaced. But I think it comes right down, down to exactly what you said about the life of the asset, and how we can make sure that we can serve that life of the asset and make it more cost-effective and last longer. So, thank you very much.
I thank you, Warden Weaver, members of County Council. I certainly echo what my colleague has said with regard to looking at those numbers and seeing how, how high they are. But being across the country through FCM, I have realized how progressive Lampton County has been with creating the plan itself, because many municipalities across the country haven't even started, and indeed, there's a lot of pushback to even get started. From a federal perspective, the federal government, as we look to negotiate that infrastructure dollars, they're referring back to the asset management plans. So, the, the organize, the counties and the municipalities who have them in place already are ahead of the game. So, that, good for us. One of the things I did want to ask, though, with, with regard to condition indexes, or indices, you said, and referred to the mild winter that we're having. The mild winter that we're having is a result of the climate change that we're all experiencing, and while that might be a good thing in the wintertime by having milder winters, we may find that it's, it's going to be very costly for us in the summertime if we have torrential downpours that, and hundred-year storms that are occurring every 10 years, or every five or every two. So, with regard to determining the best practices or the best way to build and stretch out our assets, are we taking that into effect as well? The climate change is creating so many different things, and actually, when we look at the building, the building code itself is changing as a result of that. How is that going to impact us? Are we, we keeping an eye on it and trying to change some of these numbers?
I will, I will initially answer, and then I will turn that over to, to Mr. Cole to respond. The, the plan that we have right now looks at our existing assets and the, the impact of these changes onto them. So, we are looking at roads as constructed, we're looking at buildings as constructed, and yes, we, we will have to factor in all those things that are there. We've identified and had to make significant modifications to our air conditioning systems in buildings, for example, because of the changes that are there. So, the short answer with regards to the asset management plan is, no, we haven't taken that into account yet because we're, we're dealing with things that are already, you know, built in place, and we have to figure out how to adapt and deal with those on an ongoing basis. So, we are very reactive and responsive in that regard. But I'll let Mr. Cole speak about what he's doing and his staff are doing with regards to reflecting that in their construction.
Through you, Mr. Warden. Yeah, and what John said is, is very true. We base these plans, it's, it's a large enough task up to this point to base these plans on our, on knowing what we have as our existing infrastructure, knowing what the costs of those will be to replace, and, and bringing that forward to a projected timeline. Really improvements to accommodate new or, like previously unforeseen conditions. We, you know, we can't project that out in the, in the future. It's, it's, it's not something that you can accurately see. So, much of that can be accommodated in, in the lifecycle replacement cost. So, when you, when you reconstruct a roadway, for example, to, to increase the ditches on that roadway, the property that's required to widen that out to accommodate those ditches, and, and those sorts of things can easily be included in the, the costs that you're seeing there. But when we look at, when we look at other aspects, say, for example, our policy to include cycle lanes, or our policy to include widened shoulders to accommodate vulnerable road users, you know, that's, that's an improvement to that roadway, and it's, it's not necessarily included. And there's larger ones than that that we, you know, that we have implied upon us, applied to us through environmental conditions and many other legislative, legislative causes, right?
Counselor Marriott.
Thanks, Warden Weaver. Just wondered, like, for our municipality, we're in the same boat as far as looking at where, where can we get the amount of dollars we need with, what we need over the next five years? So, I'd like to ask my colleague to the right here, FCM rep, if, I know the feds, the federal government, Trudeau campaigned his last, two, coming up two years ago on infrastructure spending, but I don't think I've seen any yet. Is FCM putting pressure on, on the government to, to live up to their promise because of another year, and then they'll be going into election mode again, and we won't see, we won't see anything?
Through you, Warden, to my colleague to the left. Yes, FCM certainly has. During advocacy days that we had in November, we met with all members of government, not just members of the ruling party, to impress upon them the need. As matter of fact, I'm heading out in two weeks, out west again, to another FCM conference, and we were hoping to have some sense of what was in the budget. That has been pushed off. What we're hearing is March 21st, but that's not a definitive date. So, we have outlined complete priorities, I should say, for communities right across Canada, and certainly from my perspective as Lampton County's rep, from a rural perspective. We've been pushing and pushing, and yes, I understand that they are listening to what we are saying, and we certainly want to know where the infrastructure money is, how it's going to flow through us, and that's one of the big things, or if it is. And that's one of the big things that we're waiting to hear because that's where we're pushing the initiative. Similar, we would like to see a flow-through like the gas tax did. So, we're continuing to push allocation, not application, and that's where this asset management plan comes in to play. So, from a Lampton County's perspective, as I said before, we're in very good shape to be able to access that money. There's the other thing that's happening right now, which is the infrastructure bank that's causing a lot of interest amongst everyone, and how that's going to affect the flow-through of this, this money, and if that's going to be the vehicle, we still don't know about that. So, that's the biggest concern, I would say, that municipalities have across Canada, is where the, where is the money coming from, number one, and how long is it, what's the payback going to be? And how is that going to affect the country overall? Because if, are you going to give me money now that I'm going to be indebted to you years down the road? That type of thing. That's a very big concern, especially among very small communities. For example, one community that I've, I've spoken about before is in British Columbia that only has 135 people. So, what's their share going to be? But there is one thing that they are saying, that there is going to be a base, a base amount per capita, and then more, depending on the need and what you have. And that, again, comes back to your asset management plan because they can see exactly what your assets are, whereas some of the communities haven't got a clue. But they know that they're going to be receiving a base rate. It's now, what else am I going to be receiving?
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? We have a motion to, oh, Counselor Napper.
Are we on to B yet? In that?
We're dealing with item B. There's a motion to receive for information.
Okay. I, I'd like to address the long-term care problem there, where we're having a decrease at Lampton Metta View Villa of $240,000 as a result of higher-than-budget wages and benefits from costs from backfilling. Do I understand backfilling is when somebody doesn't show up for a shift and we have to bring somebody in on that shift? Is that what backfilling means?
Okay. I think we're, we're still at the asset management plan, or item 5B. Sorry about that. We're, we're dealing with the information reports. Item 5B, motion to receive for information. I've got the motions already on the floor. Is there any, any other comments? All in favor of that? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. We'll move on to item 6, 6A. These are reports that require a motion. There's a report for non-cash expenses included in the 2017 budget. And there's a recommendation at the end of that report to Counselor Brusowicz. Move that, seconded by Counselor McGugan. Any questions on that? There's a three-part recommendation. All in favor of that? That's carried. Thank you. And item B, this is the report regarding the 2016 year-end report on the corporate surplus. Counselor Napper.
Thank you very much, Warden Weaver. I have a lot of concerns on this at Lampton Metta View Villa and also Lampton Lodge, where the backfilling, I don't understand backfilling, is that, and I guess you can tell me, is that when you bring in staff, when somebody doesn't show up?
Mr. Ennis?
I defer to my colleague to my right as necessary. Backfilling is, means that we have a position that must be occupied, whether the incumbent is there or not. It could be because somebody called in sick, it could be that somebody's on vacation, it could be the fact that somebody is having to backfill for another position or is on training. But in general, it simply means it's a position that is required to be staffed and that we have to bring somebody other than the usual occupant of that position in to perform the tasks at hand.
Thank you very much. I know there's been a lot of concerns, and it's been brought to the attention of, of everyone over there, of people not showing up for their shift. And it's not only affecting the budget here, it's affecting the people. I think there's 22 people on, over there that require two people transfers. Sometimes there's only one PSW on a floor, and they have to go down and bring somebody up, and this happens quite often. What is being done? Can you not track those employees, or if it, the same ones are doing it all the time? Isn't there something? This has been going on for a long time, and it must have to ring up a $240,000 deficit. What's being done to correct that, that equity over there?
Through you, Warden. So, the biggest concern we have right now is people on long-term medical leave, so that is what's affected the report, what's in the report today. So, if someone's off for a long period of time trying to backfill, that position is difficult with the number of staff that we have. We have done quite a bit of hiring, although we, we are having some challenges with that as well. There's only so many applicants. It's partly to do with the age of our workforce and the fact that many of them have been doing heavy work for a long time. We do follow the County of Lampton Attendance Management Program, and there has been work being done on that in the last half a year, for sure, at Lampton Metta View.
Thank you. I don't have a, a motion on the floor regarding this. There's the recommendation on page 5. Counselor Case, seconded by Counselor Gillis. Any further questions? Counselor McDougal.
Yes. If I could, Warden Weaver, to, to Ms. Joris. With some of the challenges that we're having in our two homes, and I appreciate what you had to say about the attendance management, the age of the workforce, et cetera, in terms of these long-term medical leaves, but are we experiencing pressure in our homes with workers who are also obligated to other jobs elsewhere, who are splitting their time between two jobs to knit together income? And does that have any effect on people calling in just because they're having to maintain two jobs rather than maybe one full-time position with us? Thank you.
Through you, Warden. Yes, it is a challenge. A lot of our part-time staff do have more than one position that they hold. We do have, our scheduling software does have an opportunity for some of our workers to put in their availability, which has helped a lot, but there are lots of our part-time staff who hold more than one position, some with us, some with other providers as well. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Napper.
Why is it so much higher just at the one home and not the other homes if this is the situation?
So, the problem that we're experiencing at Lampton Metta View Villa is related to a number of people on long-term leaves. And so, we, we backfill, we offer overtime, we try to hire people, but we still do not have enough people to cover all those leaves. It's a fairly significant number of full-time PSWs that are off right now, more than we've ever experienced before.
Thank you. Any other questions? All in favor of the recommendations? That's carried. Opposed? Carried. And we move on now to our budget deliberations. Item A, there's a memo there, and I would ask Mr. Ennis to speak to the process.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. The, the memo outlines basically the, the general details of how we are going to be undertaking the discussions today. Again, as we have been doing now for, I think, somewhere in the neighborhood of about at least a half a dozen years, we will be proceeding on the basis of motion by exception, which essentially means that if you are satisfied with the information in a particular budget before you, then no motion is needed to require, or is required to accept that. The only time that a motion is required is if you The only time that a motion is required is if you are seeking to make a change in the budget. So in theory, if you liked absolutely everything that we presented and didn't want to make any changes, you could actually approve the budget with one motion. Otherwise, as you're going through, there are two issues that you must address in order, or I should say that we would ask that you address before you get to the final consideration. The first is the grant request. And as we always have, we present to you any new grant requests that are received throughout the year. Those monies are not built into the budget so that any payment that you were to make in the form of a grant that is not funded from another source would then therefore increase the amount of funding required from the tax base and in turn the tax rate. The second item that is required to take a look at that is also not included into the budget and this year is a bit of a unique situation, but nonetheless, is items that are referred to budget. And we have one matter there that we will ask you to take a position on as well. Otherwise, as you're going through, if you have questions, the general manager will determine whether they can answer that directly themselves. Or as you can see, we have a number of staff managers in the chambers here today in order to expand upon the response if more detailed responses are required. Staff are not making presentations. Hopefully, the information that was put in the binders before you gave you sufficient information to understand why we are asking for the dollars that we are asking. We do have an online tracking system as we have been using for a number of years as well. We are able to show you what the starting point of the budget is. And on the two screens, we're showing this right now. When there is a financial motion, so in other words, a motion that will have a financial impact, we will bring up a second screen. We will indicate into this what budget is affected, the mover, the seconder. If you need to go to a recorded vote, you should ask the clerk. The clerk will then instruct staff to initiate the randomizer so that we can conduct that. And then once you have decided either in favor of or against the motion that's on the floor, we will reflect that number and show you the impact on the starting percentage of increase on the budget. You will note, if you were paying close attention, that the percentage that is showing on these screens is the gross increase before we apply the new growth. We have a third screen that Mr. Gruchen will put up from time to time. And what we will do here is that we will be able to show you the final net impact on the tax rates after new growth has been applied. So as we are going through this, we will track the screens. Sometimes we may need to let Mr. Gruchen and Ms. Blackstock have a little bit of time to get the information that is in there. But we will be able to hopefully keep up with you and keep you up to date with regards in real time as to what the impacts on the budget are, the decisions that you make today. So with that, Mr. Warden, I turn back to you.
Thank you for that on the process. Item A is the council grants, and this is Sarnia Lampton Rebound Grant Request. And I would ask Ms. Rushhorne to give us some background or... Councillor Case?
Actually, Mr. Warden, if it would be okay, I'd like to move the grant as presented at this point in time of $164,250. If I get a seconder to that grant.
Councillor Bradley. Discussion on that? Councillor Arnold.
Thank you, Warden Weaver. Just, I had a discussion this morning in regards to this grant. And my understanding is that we're actually, part of this grant process is $84,000 for an HVAC system in a leased building. And I really struggle with the county being involved in paying somebody into a leased building. Not sure how long the lease is for, maybe it's for 50 years. But I think we need a little more information before I can support spending $84,250 on a HVAC system for a leased building anywhere.
Ms. Rushhorne want to speak to that? Please?
Through you, Warden. Certainly, we support the request from the Hub Agency, the vision and the need for the services. Both Ontario Works and Social Planning have been working with this group. They actually sit at the Lampton Children's Planning Network table as well. So there's, as you know, about 35 agencies that have come together with regards to this. Since the request has come in, we just learned that there have been some developments with regard to the Hub. There have been some opportunities that have been presented to the Hub, that they really do need some additional time to assess those opportunities and to see what the potential impact could be on the grant request. We've identified that there is a potential source of funding, which would be the Social Services Reserve from the sale of Coronation Park, which could be used to fund the program. So that additional time that they would be requesting would allow them to fine-tune this grant and to consider that additional opportunity that has been presented to them and to make their case to counsel and give you the time to consider that.
Councillor Bradley?
Two points. I've talked to Mayor Case and I think we're both in agreement. This would be a one-time grant and so that the well would be sealed after this. Secondly, to staff there, what's a reasonable time period if we move to table this councillor Case's motion? Three months, six months? What would be reasonable? So we're giving them enough time and we're not bringing it back automatically until they're ready?
I would suggest, yes, that we do give them the time and it would be about three to six months.
Count?
I will then move to table Mayor Case's motion for six months. However, if there are new developments, this could be brought forward when they're ready to come to us.
There's a motion to table and it's been seconded. There's no further discussion regarding that, so all in favor of tabling for six months. That's carried. This is regarding the three-year exhibit plan for the Canada Waterscapes, and there's a recommendation on the agenda. Councillor Arnold?
I'll make a motion to move this for acceptance. I know it's a couple of years out and that'll give our staff time to start planning for that. It's probably going to impact about $5,000, $6,000 a year. But I'm sure if we give them some time, they'll come up with some really great alternative funding mechanisms to make this happen. But they need to be able to plan.
Seconded by councillor Napper. Any questions regarding this? Seeing none, all in favor? That's carried. Thank you. And item D. This is the review of departmental budgets, beginning with county council on tab four. Is council to go through the budget? Have we gone through? Seeing none, any questions on tab five? I don't want to get ahead of everybody. Everybody caught up? Tab six? Councillor Arnold?
Thank you, Warden Weaver. I'm just wondering if we could just get a little bit of an update on where we stand on the backlog and if there's any hope that we're going to recover any more dollars towards that. I know there's information here, but I just thought I'd ask the question on the court backlogs.
The courts is proving to be something that unfortunately, time in the eye of the province seems to have passed. We're seeing a number of actions that are taken. The most recent thing that they have done is they have expanded plate denial to certain moving traffic violations, which is an added enhancement to, how shall we say, gently persuade individuals they should pay outstanding fines. That is in the process of being implemented. It should be effective in May of this year. And what we are expecting from that is that that will allow us to start going back seven years. And for the selected types of offenses, we are going to be able to put forward a prohibition on the renewal of that particular plate. It's not perfect. There are certain issues with it. We continue to work on that. But it is, it will be a moderate increase to the ability to enforce payment of fines. With otherwise, staff in the courts continues to utilize tax rolling where that is feasible. That seems to be working very effectively and I commend Mrs. Vermeer and her staff on how they have implemented that. That's worked extremely smoothly and again, it's been helping us a lot. As far as the court backlog and staffing, or I guess we'll call it staffing issues in the courts are concerned, the courts continue to seem to be understaffed as far as the number of justices of the peace that are able to sit. The province tells us they are working on it. We are not seeing major impacts in Lampton. Lampton still has one of the shortest timed trial rates in the province, but we continue to monitor that and we do have the option of asking for a blitz court if things get really behind. So we will monitor that to see what is happening. We continue to talk with the enforcement agencies about the various topics of joint interest, shall we say. It is interesting that across the province, we are noticing that there seems to be a general decline in the level of enforcement with regards to moving traffic violations. That's something that we cannot directly control. It is something that continues to be brought to the attention of the province. Don't know what the solution to that is, but my point here simply is the fact that what is happening in Lampton is also happening elsewhere. So it's something that we hopefully will see some attention to at some point in time. We did have a large fine that was imposed last fall. We were hoping that that was going to come through before the end of 2016. It is not due until, I think it's the end of this month approximately, and we have every indication that that is going to be paid. We did do an adjustment to our revenue projections for court services this year to include that. Fingers crossed. Every time we've done an adjustment in the past, we seem to get stymied at some point in time, but we're fairly confident that this is going to come forward. So the trends that we've been noticing through the years continue to be there. There seems to be much less of the big-ticket offenses going forward. Some of that, I think, is because of administrative monetary penalties. Some of that is just simply, hopefully, because we're seeing more compliance with the rules than we've seen in the past. Staff continue to work diligently to make sure that things are administered in the appropriate fashion. Our prosecution works tirelessly. We make sure that we get things through to the courts as quickly as was possible. We have set up payment plans to facilitate people to pay their fines if they cannot do a lump sum all at once. And we continue to use every enforcement tool available to us.
Follow-up, councillor Arnold?
Thank you, Warden Weaver. And one of the things, one of the reasons why your fines are probably down is because we're all getting a little older and we tend to slow down because we don't see quite as good. But there was a few years ago, we had made the suggestion that they, our policing folks carry a credit card machine with them and they could pay it on the spot. I know there's some jurisdictions, not in Ontario or even in Canada, that do that. And I'm just wondering if that's something that ever comes back on the table? Because I think one of the first, one of the times when we did suggest that, it came back saying that our policing services were not accountants and that they weren't the ones that should be having your card put in a machine to clear their fine. But I'm just wondering if that's something that, now that we're looking at photo radar again through the province and we do have the red light cameras installed in various jurisdictions, if that's something that the province may consider going back to, looking at again, that instead of having the court backlog? Because 90% of the fines are paid out of court. So, you know, if we went to that type of system, maybe we'd pick up another bunch.
There are a number of issues with there in addition to the fact of the comments about the police not being accountants. The other thing that we keep on hearing is, well, who will pay for the equipment at the side of the road and the connection for that? It gets a little bit ridiculous at times when in certain police forces, they've gone to an electronic printer for a ticket. And when you have, when they needed the snap sets for the tickets, the short-form tickets, that was a responsibility to the courts to pay it. They went to the electronic printed in the car and the police services expected the courts to pay for the toner and the paper for these machines as well. And you sort of sit there sometimes and you wonder what's going on. It is brought to the, brought to the attention of MAG, who we go through with the courts. The police services, of course, report to a different ministry, so now we have to get across to ministries, get the ministries to agree to it. MTO also tends to get in the middle of all of this and it's difficult. In other words, the point I'm making is that we bring it forward, we talk about the possibility of doing this, but we cannot get, we've never been able to get the minister or the ministerial, senior ministerial staff from the affected ministries together in one room to reach an agreement onto it. I also do not believe that the association of police chiefs or police associations, police service boards, police service boards, is very much in favor of it as well because they view it as being something that does not provide a benefit to their members and they would question why they would deal with it. So the short answer is we're not seeing a whole lot happening. It does continue to be talked about from time to time. There would be obstacles in bringing it forward, but that does not mean that we cannot try and do so again.
Councillor Hand?
I think the ability to be able to block someone from getting a license is going to be a huge impact, so it would be interesting to wait and see the benefit of that. As you said, it doesn't come into effect in May and maybe it will negate the idea of having to look at a different collection system on the road. So let's see what happens from this major change.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Anything else on tab seven? Tab eight, Infrastructure Development and Services Division. Councillor McGugan?
Yeah, Mr. Warden, members of county council. I just wonder, when I look at the numbers and I see that we've, the kind of winter that we've had, through you, to maybe Mr. Cole, could he find a million dollars of money that we have not spent on roads? We haven't broke anything and that would bring our percentage point down by one point. I'm just looking for a comment. We could even go down to 750 if that helps you.
Mr. Cole?
Through you, Mr. Warden. Respectively, we could certainly take a million dollars out. Those costs are going to be what the costs are. In this case, when we look at last year and what was done last year, we had already taken, based on our yearly averages, $250,000 out of this year's budget towards winter control. It has been an exceedingly light winter, but we do still have vehicles out on the roadways in the mornings. It's that the temperature drop, the temperature points have been that, that they... It's that the temperature drop, the temperature points have been that, that they, they need that direct liquid application and a little bit of salt to make sure that our roads are safe. If Counsel would like to entertain a number, I would be prepared to, to recommend a number of $200,000 from this budget, in addition to that 250 that was already taken out.
Okay. Counselor Bradley?
Raising. Seems to me to be wiser to just move that and put it in a reserve, because it becomes a false economy next year. And so if there is such a motion, I'll be asking that we just put it aside and wait to see. We've got a few more months to go. This is Canada, and it is winter time. And I just don't think it's a good thing to do for the future. So I'll do that if someone tries to move that into, or if you just leave it alone, that's fine. Yeah.
Counselor McDougall?
Warden Weaver, I'd just like to make a comment. I don't want to make the motion. Because we sit so often in the shoulder seasons of, or the shoulders of winter at Freeze Thaw, I can appreciate that we're not out there full-on plowing. But I do think that Mr. Cole's making a really good comment about how we treat the roads in anticipation of temperature change, which really does keep us all safe on the road. And sure as guns, as soon as we do this, we'd get bad weather. So I'd just as soon leave it alone and let things be, and not leave our public works people worried that they don't have budget, or any of us worried when we see the weather change, because we're, we just rest too often at Freeze Thaw for people to be safe on the roads. Thank you.
Counselor Gillis?
Thank you, Warden Weaver, Members of County Council. Yes, I, I would echo my two colleagues here. I don't like playing around with that kind of money, simply because it's, it's unpredictable. And again, harkening back to what we were talking about just a half an hour ago, we know that climate change gives us these wild swings, so that we could have a prairie clipper come our way two weeks from now and end up in the situation that they were in New Brunswick. So you just, you just never know. So I would rather see us do the five-year projections rather than year to year. And I know that's what you do. You do a five-year projection. So I'd rather leave it alone.
Counselor Napper?
Yes, Warden Weaver. Mrs. Gillis just touched on, everything was based on an average, I think, over the last number of years, and it can come back and bite you. I guess it's on the foot it bites you. But don't we just reserve that money anyway at the end of the year?
Mr. Ennis?
Right now, what happens is that, yes, it would drop to the bottom line, and then that comes forward in the end-of-the-year recommendation from myself as to what to do with a surplus or a deficit. If we are in a surplus position, we reserve the monies. If we were, had unexpected expenditures elsewhere, and we were able to save monies on plowing or just snow removal for a year, then that would help mitigate some of those extra costs. So there is always a direct benefit to the ratepayer from savings that come from a light winter.
Counselor Marriott?
Thank you, Warden Weaver. I'd like to be a bit of a contrarian here and say that with the winter we've had, surely we, we would be able to take the two, I mean, 250, 250,000 isn't chicken feed. It would be nice to see the budget get under 2% in line with inflation, because there's, OMPF is causing the lower municipalities a lot of pain still, and we have to, we're looking at some fairly large increases in the lower tier, and it'd sure be nice to see us under 2. And I can't believe we're saying, oh, it's only 250,000, but I'd like to, I'd even make the motion that we, we do that.
Your motion is that we, motion is reduce 250,000 from winter operations?
Yes.
Is there a secondor for that? Counselor McGugan? Counselor Case, you had your hand up.
Yeah, Mr. Warden, that's fine. I thought we were having a debate around something that there wasn't a motion on. It was good discussion, but now that's mute, because you have a mover and secondor.
Thank you for that. Any other discussion on that motion? Any other comments on it, to reduce the 250,000 from the winter operations?
Vote, because it's a philosophical thing?
Okay. We've been asked for a recorded vote. Yes, and I see we are engaging the randomizer, which has picked Counselor McDougall was... Counselor Marriott? Counselor McCharles? Counselor McGugan? Counselor Napper? Counselor Veen? Warden Weaver? Counselor Arnold? Counselor Bushy? Counselor Bradley? Counselor Broad? Absent. Counselor Brusowicz? Counselor Case? Counselor Cook? Counselor Gilliland? Counselor Gillis? Counselor Hand? That is defeated. Any further motions on tab eight? Tab nine, Public Health Services Division? Any questions? Tab 10, Social Services Division? Counselor Arnold?
Thank you, Warden Weaver. I appreciate the opportunity to comment, or ask the question. I just would like to know how much money we spent in the housing improvements in 2016? I know that we'd allocated almost $4 million to do a bunch of work, and I'm just wondering what percentage of that work was completed, and if we had an opportunity to ensure that there was the $4 million, because we were concerned at the time of being able to ramp up fast enough to, to make a substantial difference. I see that coming up, we got another 3.925 in here for that work, which is great. I'm sure we're well underway, but I'm just wondering how we made out in 2016?
Ms. Hall can provide your numbers for you, if you wish. We did do a report back in November that indicated that the majority of our projects would be completed in year, and we had two or three projects that we were carrying forward to 2017. I believe two of those projects have already been completed. Ms. Hall may have some information on the other, but those projects were well in hand, and the team, along with John's Facility Services, really worked hard to get that work ramped up and, and done in year.
Counselor McDougall?
Yes, Warden Weaver, thank you. On page 19, where we're into homelessness and child poverty reduction, the discussion about rent utility bank agreements, are we content that we are able to set enough money aside to help those who are struggling with their utilities? I see that Blue Water Power, somewhere in the material that I've read in the last couple of days, is looking at a huge deficit, well, it's a, it's a significant amount of money that people are not being able to pay their bills. They may not actually be people that we're currently aware of. I worry that if the hydro rate increases continue over the course of the year, we may not have enough money to help the folks who need it. Can you comment on where we're sitting with that, and whether or not we're going to have enough money over the next budget year for the people who need our assistance?
Through, through you, Warden. We certainly provide that rent utility assistance, that $108,000 that's provided to the, to the different agencies to assist with that. They do fundraising as well, so this, this tops up what, what they would be doing. And as well, we do provide assistance through the municipal residency benefit for those that are on social assistance as well. But certainly, the, the municipal residency benefit in and of itself has seen significant challenges in this last year, in large part because of utilities, so we, we have seen that increase. It becomes a challenge when you're responding to reactively. And so we're, we're trying to work with people on a proactive basis, which is some of the work that our community support workers do, to help with making sure that accommodations are affordable and sustainable, and what is your plan for moving forward. So as a community, it, it's something that we continue to plan for and to work with, but certainly you have identified a significant challenge for us.
Follow-up?
Yeah, and just if I could, because I see that Mr. Ennis and his budgeting, for instance, around the increased cost of electricity for, for our facilities, budgeting in additional funds, have the powers that fund this rent utility bank then, have they directed an appropriate increase beyond what we're doing? Because when we turn to these folks and ask them to go out and fundraise to help, you know, that's really, that's not a good thing going forward. So is that 10%? Has it been worked into the system to help if we know our electricity costs are going to go up 10%? I would think we should have an extra 10% in that as well.
We are actually planning on an annual basis with a set allocation from the, the ministry, as well as some levy dollars that were associated with things that the county had funded previously, such as emergency shelters and the community startup benefits. So it is a fixed pot of money. I know that the social planning team is working with the community in terms of that social investment. Where should that investment be directed? As you know, we have four pilots that are, that are ongoing, that are working with particular areas and needs in the community. But the team will be looking at all of that investment over the course of this year, and will be making some recommendations for moving forward, so that we're meeting provincial targets, or not targets, but provincial priorities with regards to those monies, and also trying to better address the, the needs that are, that are in the community. So are we funding things that maybe shouldn't be funded at the level that they are to allow us to, to make those kinds of changes? So that would be coming forward later in the year, once the community and, and social planning have had time to, to evaluate that and to complete their evaluations of all those programs.
Counselor Case?
Yes, Mr. Warden, through to you. I believe there's going to be an announcement today when it comes to hydro. And again, I'm not exactly sure, and I don't think anybody is for sure, but there's been lots leaked to the media that there'll be a further 17% reduction today. So there will be some relief to folks. I understand this is a serious issue. We've all talked to our provincial counterparts many times on this, and I do believe there'll be some relief today, and I think most people around the, around the room know that. And that will have some help. But at the same time, we realize there'll still be people that need, so I'm quite confident that number that's there will get the job done myself personally. But anyways, just a comment. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Okay. Counselor Napper?
Yeah, I, I don't quite understand all this. How many agencies are funding this program? I hear of different ones that have banks, and there's churches, and there's the Good Shepherd, and, and all these people. How many different agencies are actually out there funding this hydro problem?
Through you, Warden. We actually contract with three particular agencies, but you're right, Counselor Napper, there would also be churches in the community that would be assisting people on a, on an ad hoc basis, that we do not incorporate in our numbers. So people will access services or supports that are available to them as well.
So am I correct in, oh, I'm sorry. Am I correct in assuming that, that this money here is the same money that's funneled through the end of the Good Shepherd when they help out people?
Through you, Warden. Yes, the end of the Good Shepherd is one of the agencies we work with. Yes.
Counselor McGugan?
Members of County Council, to, through you, to Ms. Rush Horton, and perhaps to our FCM rep. I got involved with a number of people, and they ended up dealing with United Way, I believe, in Aroya. Is that still happening? That was last year that that happened, and they did get some help on their hydro bill. And the other thing is, I keep hearing vague comments from the federal government that there is more money coming for social housing. Are we eligible, or do we know anything about that?
Through you, Warden. I'm not familiar with United Way funding that would be accessible for, for residents. That, that's something, and I'm seeing a shaking head at the back as well, so we're not familiar with that. Through the Inn? Well, it's quite possible that the Inn, the Inn may have made an application, but that would not be reflected in, in the county's budget, so we're not aware of that. The second part of that was with regards to the social housing. We have heard the, the same, that, that there should be announcements coming, but we have no, no information with regards to that.
Any other questions regarding tab 10? Counselor Gillis?
Thank you, Warden Weaver, Members of County Council. With regard to the direct question with FCM, the infrastructure monies, and I'm vice chair of the infrastructure, the Infrastructure Committee, we were talking about this yesterday on a teleconference call. There's three different types of infrastructure that we're looking at. The gray infrastructure, which is your linear infrastructure, the green infrastructure, which is a different grouping, and then the social infrastructure, which takes in affordable housing for new builds and also for repairs. This is something that all of the municipalities across the country are pushing, and this is something that we've heard that we're going to hear something about. But again, we're, we're waiting like you. But considering all the advocacy work that we've done over the past six months, I feel confident that we'll hear something in this budget.
Anything else? Tab 10.
Sorry.
Counselor Hand?
Warden Weaver. I just had a question around the lease agreement. Was concerning that it said the lease is expiring in May 2017. That, that's not a lot of time. Page nine. The lease at the Bayside, Bayside Center.
Mr. Ennis?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. We have been in constant discussions with the owners of the mall, and although we have not yet signed the extension to that, let's say that that is with the full knowledge, understanding, and at the request of the ownership of the mall, that we are currently deferring that. We expect to be in a position to be able to sign the extension this month. We have agreed on the terms that were presented to you as counselors last fall. Let's just simply say there's some things going on behind the scenes that we're waiting to work out, and as soon as they are, we will be signing the document at that time. But please do not worry, we're not leaving the mall.
Thank you. No, I was just concerned about staff and timing, and it's not that far away. Thanks.
Anything else? Tab 11, Long Term Care Division? Counselor Arnold?
Yes, Warden Weaver. I'm, I'm looking at the Lampton Meadow View Villa, and I'm glad to see that we're replacing the bedpan disinfectors finally, and being as they pass their life expectancy. And I just, I was wondering about the, the baths, the bathing systems. I see on here around the lifting mechanisms as well. I can remember when there was fundraising done by a lot of the local service clubs to help out with that. And, you know, I got looking back through here, and I just can't believe how fast the time's gone by on these so-called new builds that most of us remember. And I know that John's got this as part of his long-term replacement strategy when we look at the capital need stuff. But when I look at the, the buildings that are in here, $3 million to $6 million a year doesn't seem that's going to be adequate to replace a lot of these things. But I'm just wondering, I'll go back to the, the list for the bathing systems. Is there an opportunity out there to partner again with some of the service agencies that were so generous early on when we were looking at these so many years ago now? And just wondering if there's newer technology probably out there, Ms. Joris? And just wondering if there's newer technology probably out there, Ms. Joris, that is probably going to be incorporated as we go forward.
Ms. Joris?
Through you, Warden. Yeah, we've actually been working with Tara Pounds, the development officer with the county, to see if there's some ways to do that. We've also been advocating with the ministry for some minor capital to replace. You'll probably remember, Counselor Arnold, a number of years ago when we did get some funding to replace lifts in all three homes. All of those lifts are now past life expectancy, so we're just kind of replacing them as we go. There is new technology. Lampton Meadowview Villa does have ceiling lifts, which are a little bit different than the ones that you push around on the floor. So those are some of the things we're looking to replace.
Counselor Napper?
Yeah, just for my own amusement, what is the cost of a lift that you're talking about? Just a ballpark?
I might have to ask one of the managers that. I think it's a, yeah, 40, 35, 100? Yeah, between $5,000 and $7,000, and a little bit different if they're a bath lift as well.
Counselor McGugan?
Mr. Warden, members of County Council, through you to Jane. How many lifts do we have, and what is the life expectancy of them?
I don't know the answer of that just off the top of my head, but perhaps you guys have an idea of how many are in each home? Jeff, maybe? Yeah.
On up to the microphone.
Thank you, Mr. Counselor, or Mr. Warden, members of council. The life expectancy of the lifts generally run about 12 to 15 years. It was in 2002 that the ministry provided some additional funding where we purchased a significant number of lifts that are now, as General Manager Joris mentioned, are coming up to their life expectancy, and have exceeded that to some extent. In terms of the number of lifts, I'd have to go back and double-check, but I think we have currently about 25, if I'm not mistaken. It's in around that range, which is a combination of both ceiling lifts, as well as what we call portable lifts that can move room to room. What we're generally doing is transitioning to more ceiling lifts to provide better, safer care to the residents, but we still have a significant number of portable lifts that move room to room at Lampton Meadowview Villa, and it'll be comparable numbers at the other two homes as well.
Thank you. And the other, Counselor McGugan?
Warden Weaver, through you to staff. I see that we're spending $852,700 this year of upgrades to a facility that is determined to be an older A facility. And I'm wondering what kind of dollars, in terms of spending, we're anticipating putting towards this probably over the next five years? And the second part of the question would be, at what point are we going to need to replace the asset overall? That's my first question, and I may have a follow-up.
Ms. Joris?
Warden, we, part of the capital budget this year is a review that we're going to be doing at Lampton Meadowview Villa to answer those questions, what changes we have to make. The home does not meet the newest design standards. We have been advocating through our association with the ministry for some redevelopment dollars for older As. That has not been successful at this point. The part of the capital this year is a significant project of paving at the back. That lot is from when the home was built in 1993, so we, part of the capital project is a review, so we'll have an idea of what kind of money we would have to spend, and what systems might need to be replaced in the next five years.
If I could, Warden Weaver, to follow up. We're not in any jeopardy of not meeting, because I see we are putting, directing some funds at visitor, resident, staff safety concerns. And I guess I'm just concerned that with this older A facility, we either get the monies that we need to meet the health and safety concerns, or that we need to start planning towards some major changes. So I guess we'll leave this year to roll out and see where we go from here, but that sort of remains my concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else on Tab 11? Tab 12, Cultural Services Division? Seeing none, Tab 13, Counselor Arnold, sorry.
Thank you, Warden Weaver. I'm just curious, and I know we've talked about it a number of times as to, what is the amount of money left owing on the build project for the art gallery? Where do we stand with that? Or is it all paid off? John, are you going to give me some great news?
Mr. Innes?
I would love to give you some great news, Counselor Arnold. Unfortunately, I can tell you that it is not completely repaid at this point in time. Where we are with regards to this is the fact that we have, we took out the loan on a long-term basis. It is actually scheduled to mature in 2032. And we have approximately, this is for the construction of the gallery. And there is, at the end of 2016, there was still $2.2 million outstanding on that. So that was, we took that out over 20 years to construct it, because there was a shortfall. I believe it was somewhere in the range of $3 to $4 million by the time everything settled on that project, when we completed it.
Follow-up?
Yeah, I guess a follow-up, that blows me away, because at one time, we were almost paid off, I thought. And I guess I'd like to see a report, if I could, John, on exactly what it is and how it got there and all the rest of it. Because we do have $7 million in our contingency fund, and I'm sure we're not actively going out and doing fundraising anymore, at least I hope we're not, because we can't afford to hire somebody to go and do it. And so I'd like to see a summary of exactly how we got there. Because when I was warden, we ended up, through a lot of lobbying efforts, our MP of the day got us another million dollars to go towards it, and that was all but $600,000 on one report that I saw left to go. And so I'd just like to know how we got to where we were, and to be honest, and you know, sometimes I'm half asleep here and I miss stuff, but I sure don't remember going out and authorizing, going to borrow $2.5 million, or whatever that number was, to finish off the project. So maybe you could help refresh my memory with a new report, John. I'm sure you probably got one there that you can dust off, and that I likely saw before a number of years ago. So, thank you.
Counselor Case?
Yes, Mr. Warden, maybe just a follow-up. I believe we do have somebody on staff that is actively trying to raise money. Wasn't that a part of a discussion we had about two years ago, whether to replace that position or not? And correct me if I'm wrong, I think we did hire somebody that part of their responsibility was to do so. Please clarify for me, if you could, please, sir.
Mr. Innes? I would be glad to, Counselor Case, you actually, she was referred to earlier this morning, that is Tara Pounds, our revenue officer. And it is not just fundraising that she looks after, she looks at all aspects of generating dollars from non-tax sources on behalf of the county as a whole.
Follow-up, Mr. Case, Counselor Case?
Yes, I was aware of Ms. Pounds' job, but I thought maybe there was somebody over and above at the art gallery that we'd put in that role as well, Mr. Innes, I mean, with some other responsibilities, but to help and assist in that role. I could be wrong, I'm just looking for clarification, because this has been going on for quite some time. And I guess another question, maybe when you're doing a report that Counselor Arnold has asked for, the other thing that we talked about was the ongoing fundraising at the gallery by the committee. And when we brought the big, I'm trying to remember the name of the big, pardon me, the Beaverbrook piece in, it was very successful, but there was a portion of money that was committed to, to be raised by a committee, and I never heard whether they met their goal or not over that whole thing. So maybe that can be part of the report as well. But again, I thought we hired somebody as part of staff within that building, that part of their job was to also do some fundraising and work with that fundraising committee. And I could be completely wrong, and if I am, I apologize, but just for clarity, please.
If I may, through you, Mr. Warden. There is a position within the staffing of the art gallery that is to assist with donations and the tracking of that. There are a number of staff that are there. One of the things that Mr. Meyer is looking at at this point in time is the effectiveness of the current organization, and whether or not there should be further changes to that in order to improve the efficiencies that are there. We did report on the Beaverbrook as to what the donations were, but we will include that in the updated report. What we'll do is we'll look at where we are with regards to the state of financing and the ongoing issues with regards to the art gallery, and we can cover off all of those aspects at the same time.
Follow-up, Mr. Counselor Case?
Just follow-up, and I don't want to be seen as beating up on the gallery, because that's not my intention here by any means, but I do believe there was a number that that committee had sort of used as a goal, as far as around the Beaverbrook exhibit. And I don't think we ever saw, we did see some different numbers, I know I've asked before, but I'd like to see where that ended up as well. And again, I don't want to be seen as beating up on the gallery, it's been very successful in many ways, but I think the financial aspects of what's going on there, we need to know. So I'll welcome the report, and thank you.
Did you, do we have a motion for that report? Is that, do we need just direction? Okay. Counselor McGugan?
Well, Mr. Warden, members of County Council, while we're doing the report, can we look at, did all the pledges that were pledged, have they been received, or are there still some going out further? And I noticed that you did have 12 employees, I noticed that there was two less. Now, how many full, and how many part-time people do we have? Because I go back a ways when I believe it was run with three or four. So maybe you could, I don't have that answer today, maybe that could come to the complete report.
Okay, that'll be included in the report. Any other questions regarding Tab 12? Counselor Bradley?
I get the impression that a number of things are being mixed in here. And the question I have is, there was the outstanding amount, the shortfall in the fundraising for the building. And I recall, that was $450,000, $500,000, or something like that. At what point do you simply say, because you know, from experience, I'm sure everyone's had the same experience, once a building is open and up and running, it is much more difficult to get people to contribute to the capital cost of it. So I think in this report, we should look at what the options are. And I do believe on the Beaverbrook, they met their goals, and again, it was a phenomenal show for the community of Sarnia Lampton. But I think at some point, we've got to decide, do we want to continue to fundraise on a building that's been open for a number of years, on the capital side, or move on and just try to fundraise to assist the project as it continues its job in the community, the gallery does? And I think that needs to be something we need to make a decision on, because no point in leaving that, I hate the phrase, stranded debt, sitting there.
Mr. Innes? The shortfall in, from the donations that was originally there, is actually to the point of virtually being covered at this point in time. So that's not an ongoing issue or concern, it's not being a financial drag on either the gallery or the county at this point in time. And Ms. Pound and, you know, the other staff that have been involved with the fundraising have recognized the fact that there's no sense in fundraising for a building that is already there. They have been looking at, how do we adjust the ask to reflect the current situations and to try and build the support that we need on an ongoing basis? And there's been a number of things that have been looked into that. Mr. Meyer is also looking into that aspect as part of his review that is there. So I can say that, no, fundraising with regards to the building is complete. With regards to where we are with the various pledges that were there, I would suggest to Counselor McGugan that we've had probably a very good response in relationship to the overall pledges that we were looking for. There are a number of people who are continuing to provide donations to the gallery at this point in time, beyond their initial commitment. So there still is good support that is out there. It does not mean that we could not do more, and it is one of the things that is being looked at, to try and determine how do we get the ongoing support of the community in order to leverage the good support of this council, and to achieve all the wonderful things that we know that the gallery is capable of.
Okay. Seeing nothing on Tab 12, Tab 13, intangible capital assets? Counselor McCharles, Deputy Warden, McCharles.
Thanks, Mr. Warden, members of County Council. I kind of missed it in Tab 9, but in 2016, we built a new EMS facility in Forest, and I just wondered if that facility is completed, and how much under budget we came in.
Mr. Taylor?
Through you, Warden. Yes, so the project was completed on time and within budget. It was finished in October of 2016. The OPP has moved in at the end of mid-January, sorry, of this year. So we're looking forward to announcing the grand opening of the facility, which we're going to plan for the end of April. And so this is a heads up, but the project's on time and within budget, and it's worked out really well, so we're real happy with the support. Thank you.
Anything else on Tab 13? Counselor Bradley?
I just want to give you some notice that at some point in the future, I'll be bringing a motion to look at an establishment of an urban museum in the Point Edward Sarnia-St. Clair Township area, that would reflect the museum system totally in Lampton County. Every day, I'm approached by people that want to give to our communities, just had a couple this past week, and have no place to send them to, that would reflect where those particular artifacts or history came from in the urban area, particularly on the marine side, and in the Sarnia area and Point Edward. And I just think it's time we take a look at that and the possibility. It's been discussed for many, many years, and I just think we need to take a look at it as part of the county system, not as a local issue. So I'll bring that at some point in the near future.
Thank you. Counselor Arnold?
Thank you, Warden Weaver. I had a couple things, just in response to Counselor Bradley, we have two St. Clair Township museums, one in Sombra, it does, has a number of marine exhibits in it, so if folks are looking for something that needs to be placed. Also, the Moore Museum also has a piece for nautical history as well. So in the short term, before it goes, if somebody has some things that they want to see put in place for perpetuity, we'd be happy to help accommodate that. I'm just wondering if I could, I have two questions directed to the budget that I couldn't find covered on. The first one was in regards to, we hired, I believe we hired a person last year to help coordinate the county activities as far as the immigration process, and, because it was all disjointed, and council as a whole felt that that person would be a good piece of that process. I'm just wondering if we could get a report on how they are doing at this time, and what initiatives have taken place or in the process of taking place? And just a report of that, I don't need, of course, anything verbal today, but maybe we could just have that brought forward to our appropriate committee within the next couple of months. And the other thing was around the capital stuff that, you know, I And the other thing was around the capital stuff that, you know, I was losing a lot of sleep over the last number of days, is the Laws plant incorporated as part of our capital long-term replacement cost, John, with as far as the capital asset piece? We've kept that at arm's length. I know the county carried the cost, and we've been making those payments back from the Laws Board. I just wanted to make sure that that was out and, and not part of it. So, all right, thank you very much. Now I'm going to not sleep too good again. So, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Tab 14? Is our reserves? Seeing no questions? Oh, Counselor Bradley.
Question to Mr. Ennis. In the past, we've had the discussion about the reserves being underfunded, not being at the level, and we've tried to correct that and try to contribute. Are you satisfied on the path we're going? Is it, well, that was probably a stupid question. But are you satisfied that we're on the right track as it comes to having appropriate reserves in the county system?
Mr. Ennis.
Through you, Mr. Warden. We can, I commend council on your commitment to build the reserves. We continue every time that we are assessed either by the province itself or by our bond raters to, they comment on the fact that the relative amount of reserves that we have are low for an organization our size. There are compensating facts for that. We are also deemed to be an extremely low borrower, and we are also repeatedly commended on our budget, budgeting process, shall we say, and how we, we control our revenues. It's interesting, with a rating agency, adequate is high praise, and we continue to get our adequate ratings in many, every year. Again, the fact that this past year, the county was able to maintain its double-A minus rating, I think, is significant, and it reflects the fact that in general, we are balanced and we are, you know, we are perceived as being good monetary managers of, of the dollars that are entrusted to us by the people of Lampton. So the short answer is yes, I'm, we continue to keep the reserves at a reasonable level. I believe that is appropriate. I am happy that council has continued to commit dollars towards investing in TCAs, which flow through the reserves, and the opportunity in contingencies reserve, even though everybody smiles every time we talk about it, has provided us both the opportunity to cover our butts when necessary and to take advantage of unseen opportunities. So I think that the foresight the council has shown in the past in building these numbers and these balances have served everybody in Lampton well.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Arnold? Oh. Counselor Arnold, then Counselor Napper. I seen him first.
Thank you, Warden Weaver. I'm just wondering, could we get a report showing the total impact of all our buildings with the hydro costs and the changes we've had year over year? And I know that the rumor mill had it this morning, that the premier was going to announce a 25% rate cut in hydro costs, and maybe whatever there is, if there is any adjustments or anything that's happened, could we have, if that's going to apply to us? Because sometimes they don't apply to municipal entities, so, thank you.
The, the 8% that was announced earlier, or late last year, did apply to us and continues to apply to us, because it's outside of the HST structure that is there. I glanced at the news feed here this morning, and the premier has announced officially a further 17%. It is not going to come into force until probably around the beginning of July. The other comment that has been made is that henceforth increases in hydro rates will be restricted to the rate of inflation. So there seems to be a bit of a longer-term strategy on that, and we will be able to, to factor what's going, the impact of that on our numbers going forward, once we see those bills. I can tell you that we've always tried, and Mr. Lucas has spent an amount of, an inordinate amount of time keeping the actual power cost component of those bills in line. It's everything else that's always been difficult, but we will, we will provide a report on that.
Follow-up, Counselor Arnold.
Yes, thank you, Warden Weaver. Just a follow-up to that, and, you know, you're watching the news feed, I just heard it at four o'clock this morning, or whatever it was, the anticipated thing, but is that the bill, or is that just the cost of hydro? Because for most of us, the delivery charge is not regulated, and it seems to have gone up exponentially over the last three months. And I think that's where people are really struggling, because for most of us, you know, you can turn the lights off and everything else, but if it means nothing at the end of the day, because your delivery charge went up three times to offset what you saved, it's not helping anybody. And I guess that's my concern, and when I look at the amount of buildings that we have through the county system, it's phenomenal. And I know at, at Laws, our hydro consumption is the single largest bill that we have, approaching $2 million on a $6 million budget. So when you start looking at that, and it's the delivery side that is so hard on everyone in the community, including, I'm sure, the county of Lampton, so I guess that's why I'd like to understand a little farther. Thank you.
Counselor Napper.
Thank you. The contingency opportunity, it's at $8 million. Is there a cap on that? Or is that just, you like, keep building it up? Because I see in there that we've only used $75,000 for signed program, and we don't pull a lot out of there, but is that where the SWIFT comes out of? Is that funded? When do we put a cap on these things? Like it's, like your piggy bank gets full, then you got to turn it upside down and shake it out, I guess, but it don't look like we've been shaking much out of this one.
Mr. Ennis.
We have not, you have not, I mean, council has not put a cap on that at this point in time. And to be honest, Counselor Napper, that's because we are probably still below the, both the mean and the average as to the level of reserves that most municipalities our size have. That being said, you do have, you have used these funds on a fairly consistent basis when the, the need has come up. And as I commented to Counselor Bradley, that has served you well, to give you the ability to respond to things without having any, you know, in-year impacts on the budget going forward. So, no, we haven't put a cap on that at this point in time, but again, I, I do not believe that you are at the point yet, or near the point, where you will be looking to invert the piggy bank and shake out the coins.
I had thought maybe I would go on what Mr. McGugan said, either cut that to $5 million and cap it, take that $3 million out of there.
Anything else dealing with Tab 14 and the reserves? Tab 15, are PSAB compliance statements? Any question regarding those? I'm at the last page, is there a motion? Counselor Case.
Mr. Warren, through you. I don't think I've ever done this in my 16 years of sitting here. I've usually voted against the budget, but I'll make a motion that we pass the budget at the current rate where we arrived at today. And just for reference, so I can put that in my motion, are we still at the 2.35%? 2.39, pardon me? I will put that number in my, my motion, if that's where we are. So that'll be my motion, pass the budget as presented at the 2.39%. If I get a second or...
Counselor Case.
Yeah, just maybe if I could. I just, again, like, I have not been one that's supported budgets over the years very often, but again, I just, I really do want to thank our staff for putting a realistic budget before us. I mean, I know a lot of work went into this, and a budget is only, it is a professional guesstimate of sorts, but I do think that it was a very thorough process, and some of the improvements and the changes that they've gone through the process this time around have really worked out well. So again, I just want to thank staff for doing a good job. Mr. Ennis, you once again have performed somewhat of a miracle here, in my estimation, to try to get this to where it is with all the uncertainty that we have today within the province of Ontario. So thanks very much, I do appreciate it.
Thank you for that, and I would echo those comments to staff as well. From my perspective, it's a very good budget. Any other questions regarding the motion? All in favor of the motion? Opposed? Motions carried. Other business? I see none listed. Notice of bylaws. Call on the clerk.
Warden, there are three bylaws before County Council this morning. Their bylaws numbers eight through 11 of 2017 has circulated. We'd be looking for a mover and a second or to have those read a first and second time.
Moved by Counselor Cook, seconded by Counselor Kuziewicz. Questions? All in favor? That's carried.
Warden, we'd be looking for a mover and a second or for a motion that would read that bylaws numbers eight through 11 of 2017 has circulated, be taken as read a third time and finally passed.
Moved by Counselor Hand, seconded by Deputy Warden McCharles. Questions? All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Motion to adjourn. Counselor Gillis. Counselor McGugan. All in favor? That's carried. We will meet again on April the 5th at 9:00 AM. That may be adjusted. Oh, next week, right. Counselor Bradley.
From all of us who chair meetings, congratulations. This is probably the shortest budget session in memory.
Tell me. You guys. Counselor McGugan.
Yeah, Mr. Warden, Members of County Council, you and I had a short discussion about that April the 5th. Is that still on? Because that's the college's day.
My office has been in communication with the president of Lampton College. I do understand that they're looking to, I don't want to give away any part of their ceremonies, but they are looking to make the part that involves every head of a local council and all municipal councils, where they're doing something within their own municipalities at 11:30 in the morning on April the 5th. Accordingly, it seems likely, although no final decision's been made, that we'll try to start County Council at 8:00 AM on the 5th, which would allow for the day's business, and then for each of you to be able to return home to your respective municipalities and engage in any ceremonies that might be taking place at 11:30 AM.
Okay. We will sing "Oh, Canada."